Good evening, welcome and Happy New Year to all. I'm calling the public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 Exeter Elementary School Budget to Order on January 9th, 2024 at 6:04 PM. The proposed warrants we will review tonight are on the proposed FY 2025 operating budget. I wanted to emphasize that the school leaders in this room, including all of our administrators and their teams, and Superintendent Dr. Azbell and our Executive Director of Finance, Molly O'Keefe, has spent a great deal of time working and reworking this budget. As a board, we held workshops to try and understand the needs of our district. It is the goal of this entire group to work on developing the budget to meet learning needs of our students while balancing that with the community needs to keep tax rate increases as low as possible. Our board believes this budget meets those goals. We will start with the operating budget. I'll read the warrant article, the first part of the warrant article, as it will be on the ballot. Shall the Exeter School Board vote to raise and appropriate, as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant as or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $24,567,043? Should, so I'll just leave it there. The overall proposed budget of $24,136,151 is what I had. It's $43, and $43 is a 3.33% increase. I'm now going to turn this over to Molly to review the major changes impacting the 2025 budget.
Okay, great. We do have a major changes sheet for anybody. So the first is salary. All changes were per CBA. There is nobody negotiating this year for people that are part of a union. Non-union staff are budgeted at a 3% increase, and this also includes FICAN retirement changes as it is a function of salary. The health GMR, or guaranteed maximum rate, is 9.9%, and dental, 4.7%. We see an increasing cost of food, as you all know when you go to the grocery store, for our food service program. We have a multi-year contract with First Student who provides our student transportation, and next year is a 2.95% increase. We've had various increases related to supplies for inflation. The translation services is going down purely for a function of timing. The special ed, transportation, and contracted service and other are all related to student The summer salaries have gone up as we've increased summer programming. The admin maintenance contract service, the admin maintenance contracts have shifted to the technology lines, and the technology has increased accordingly. And also, we've seen an increase in other technology services. The bond payment has decreased because each year you pay a little bit less per your bond schedule. And the SAU assessment went up, and that is voted on by the Joint Board annually in The maintenance contracted service includes a 3% increase for our custodial staff because we utilize the cooperative. It is a contracted service to us, not salary. And we've seen a lot of increases related to inflation for utilities. And everything else is of negative $328. Did anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I think something is that clarification, in case people are watching at home. Can you just describe what a CBA is, in case someone doesn't know that terminology?
Sure. CBA stands for collective bargaining agreement, and that is the agreement between the union and the school board.
Also for the public, when I read the warrant article about the operating budget, I did state the true and correct number of this year's, for the 2025 budget, which is $24,567,043, and then I misstated it later, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew we had the right numbers. Is there any other discussion by the board or questions from the public? Thank you, Molly. We have Article 2, which is the Special Education Expendable Trust, and Patrick O'Dea will brief us on what that looks like.
All right. Sounds good.
As well as 3, which is the Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll pause in between them.
Okay.
All right, so Article 2 on the warrant is Special Education Expendable Trust. Shall the Exeter School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be placed in the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund, previously established for the unanticipated special education costs at Exeter Elementary School? This sum to come from June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1st. No additional amount to be raised from taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation. So, we've set this up, boy, I think, five years ago, four or five years ago, and essentially what this does is that we have, we have a good gauge, pretty good gauge at least, of people in our district and what their needs might be, but there are always people that are coming into the district and leaving the district, and then needs can change. So there are times when expenditures, particularly for special education, could come up that we're not anticipating, particularly if someone needs a placement outside of the district. It can cost $100,000, a couple hundred thousand dollars, depending on the level of need. And that's not money that we have in the budget, so to fund that, we would potentially have to take that out of another line, which we don't want to do, obviously, because we're budgeting all those lines for a reason. So, this is sort of a buffer fund, that if those special placements come, we have the money to pay for it for that year, and then we can adjust the budget in the following year as needed. So, we are recommending that we add another $75,000 to that fund. It's, the goal is to get to about two placements, I think, is that right? So that will help us to get to that number, just in case that need arises. And the other piece, in case it didn't make sense on here, we typically have some funds at the end of the year, and it will be out of those funds, it wouldn't be raising additional tax dollars, so it actually doesn't have a tax impact in terms of next year's budget. That's it. Do you have any questions about that? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope.
Did you want to?
I'm good. I was going to say, if anyone had any questions.
Okay.
I think we're good.
All right, so, number three, Capital Reserve Fund, this is a similar type of warrant article. So the Exeter School District vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the Capital Reserve Trust Fund, previously established for the unanticipated capital costs at Exeter Elementary School? The sum to come from June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1st. No additional amounts to be raised from taxation. The Exeter School Board recommends this appropriation. We've actually, we've had this fund for several decades, but we have not asked the voters to add money to this fund, I think, in 15 or more years. It's been a long time. So, we've slowly spent down some money that was available in there. For example, when we made a connection between Main Street School and Lincoln Street School, and had to do some work with lighting and sidewalks, we've used some money to help do that, but it's similar to the Special Education Fund. It's really primarily for unanticipated expenses. If a furnace went out or something that we weren't anticipating, it's a way to buffer that a bit, and the goal is to, based on our fiscal plan staff, is that if we had $100,000, they felt that would be a really secure buffer, an additional $100,000 in our Capital Reserve Fund. So, we're asking the voters to take $50,000 if there is additional money at the end of this year, and 50 will last next year, but it's anticipated just to be a two-year request. It's not anticipated to be an annual request. And again, this also has no tax impact. Do any questions about the Capital Reserve Fund warrant article?
Okay, moving on. The fourth article that will appear on the ballot this year is the Investment Management of Trust Funds. In brief, shall the Exeter School District vote pursuant to RSA 35:9-A3 to authorize the trustees of the trust funds to pay for Capital Reserve Fund investment services and any other expenses incurred from Capital Reserve Fund's income? Essentially, the trustees requested, the trustees of the trust fund requested that an investment company come and now manage our trust funds. We approved that they would be able to pay that company through some of the money within those funds. So that was what we approved recently, and that is what we're asking the public to approve come along voting day. Molly, do you have any more to add to that?
No, I think you did a great job explaining it, Patty. There is no dollar value on here because it will just be paying from the income received.
Right, okay, thank you. Regarding the warrant articles, is there any more discussion by the board? Are there any more, any more input from the public? Okay, seeing that there is none, I will call the public hearing to a close at 6:15 PM. And now we will, we can just go right into our Exeter School Board meeting. We will start with the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we will start a timer for 30 minutes to allow for public input. Should anyone come in during this meeting and want to speak, we will allow them to do so. Okay.
I have a request. Could we move financials up so Molly can get to her children's concert?
No problem. Do we have to vote on that?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to move the SAU administrative update from finance to the next item on the
Thank you for moving me up. My kids currently have a chorus concert that I'm going to go to. So included in your board pack is a current year financial. Since last month, we did add $131,000. We had some positions that were filled. Typically, in years past, we've included unfilled positions, but with the challenges of hiring, we haven't been doing that, so as positions are being filled, you'll see the increases. We had some stipends that are paid by any, or that happen twice a year. We had some software increases, and then just some encumbrance changes related to utilities. Did anyone have any questions? Do not. Okay, great. And then I did also bring the warrant, the default, and the MS 26, but I believe, do we need a motion? Do we need a motion though to bring it to deliberative?
Correct. So we can do that, you can go, and then I can make sure they sign that.
Awesome.
Great. Have fun. Is it at the high school? Okay, next on the agenda is the PTO update. Is there one? No? Okay, check. And the SAU 16 Administrative Update, do you have anything to add?
No, other than, you know, we continue to work on budgets and, we continue to work on budgets, and please be on the lookout for the SAU Quarterly Newsletter, which should be coming out by Friday. It'll also be in the Joint Board packet. That has a lot of information as far, at the end, you'll see every town, and they can click on the town and find out, see the sample warrant, see the draft or budget. It has filing information, if you're interested in running for school board seats, et cetera, et cetera, so that's a great place where it's all in one spot for you, where you necessarily don't have to go to the webpage to find it for your town. It'll be at the end of that quarterly report, so if you don't want to read anything that we have to say from the SAU, at least scroll to the end, where you can find information about the budget, as well as the communication survey that we've put out. You should have received an email, there's the link there, as well as the scan to fill that out on your phone. We have gotten already about 700 responses, so I feel like people are engaging with that. It is pretty brief, but it is helpful information for us on how, as an SAU, we can communicate and receive feedback and keep that loop going. So, if you have the time, really appreciate if you would fill that out, as a community member, as a school, family, as staff, as students, as board members, whatever your role is, that would be really helpful for us as we move forward. One last plug, there is a vision summit coming up in March, March 26th, that will be at the Tuck Learning Campus at SST. Again, that's work that we really want the community engagement in. It's to look at our DEI mission statement and our current vision statement, and how to put some language around equity and diversity, inclusion, some nouns perhaps that fit how our vision is reading, that embodies that core value of DEI now into our overall vision statement. So really, kind of how we do business in SAU 16, so community input would be vital to that process. Also, as that is what will drive our strategic planning next year. So some important dates coming up, and of course, March 12th voting. Please have your voice be heard, and come out and vote.
Okay, thank you. Onto the approval minutes for, the meeting minutes from December 12th, the public meeting minutes. I reviewed them, I didn't see any changes or errors.
I didn't notice anything.
Okay. Are you good? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the December 12th meeting minutes.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the principal report. Tanya Neve, Principal of Main Street School.
I switched them.
Yeah, we'll switch it up. Hi, good evening. So Beth and I were talking about it today, and I think that we come and we do talk about lots of fun things that are happening at the schools, but sometimes you see it in our calendars as well that we send, or videos that we have. And so we were talking that it might be helpful for you guys to know just some of like the teaching and learning stuff, maybe in more detail of what's going on with the school, because there's a lot of really good work happening that we're excited about, and sometimes I think it's helpful for the community to know some of the things that are going on behind the scenes in those regards. So just, just for you guys to know, our school goals for this year, our first school priority was on Tier One, high-quality instruction, and so that is in the areas of reading, the areas that we prioritize are reading, handwriting, English language learning services, and then math. And so, some of the work that we're doing right now is, it's through PLCs or professional learning communities. There's a lot of good research on just like built-in professional development, because there's a lot of experts and a lot of different experiences in the building, and to utilize that to increase everybody else's skills and abilities. And so, you kind of take the staff and you break them down into smaller collaborative teams, and so for each one of our grade levels, we have two teams, because we have a lot of teachers. We have eight teachers or nine teachers outside of preschool on a team, and that's a lot of people to get together in the middle of the day. We use our steam block to pull those teachers together for an additional kind of prep, and so our focus this year through our collaborative teams is to work on some vertical alignment in the area of math. And so we get together and we say, like, what are the most critical skills that kindergartners have to know in math? What about the most critical skills in first grade and the most critical skills in second grade? Through professional learning communities, there's kind of four critical questions, like what, the first two are, what do we want students to learn? And then the second one is, how do we know that they've learned it? And so our work in those teams has been on those two questions for math. In doing so, we're trying to make sure that there's no gaps kindergarten through fifth grade, that there's a very vital, critical skill that kids have to know before they leave our system to go to the middle school. So we've been working with Lincoln Street to make sure that there's continuity in all those math concepts. So, I feel like we're making really good progress. We have decided, like, we have a pretty linear plan for all of those math competencies and the progression of the skills, and so now what we're doing is figuring out the scope and sequence of when do we teach them, when do we assess them, what best instructional practices help kids to acquire and hold on to these skills, and then what are we going to do when some kids don't pick it up? How are we going to cycle back through? Because if we're saying these are the most critical skills, we have to ensure that all kids leave that grade level knowing the minimum of those things. So, there's a lot of work in that, but that's kind of like our day-to-day. If you see on there, you'll see there's lots of CTTs on the calendars that you receive, and that's what that means. Those are times that those grade levels are being broken into smaller teams to do that work for math progression. The positive things about that is, I mean, we're working on common assessments, common rubrics, we're core scoring on proficiency for inter-rater reliability, to make sure that when progress reports or grade reports come home, that all first-grade families are kind of having the same understanding of what that skill and concept should look like, and that the teachers are all looking for the same level of proficiency among their students. So it's, it sounds really nerdy, but it's super fun and exciting, and we're getting a lot of great work done in that area. And then we also have been in the area of reading, we've been working with a consultant. She comes through and she does some coaching with those same grade-level teams on the science of reading, and she talks about the learning rope, and so there's like an actual science of reading about how, like, you build your understanding between vocabulary, comprehension, it's how all that information is stacked, so that kids are able to read fluently. And so she works with them on what they can be doing in their small group reading, some different strategies that come from John Hattie's work, and the instructional practices that go along with those, and she's also been focusing on some other goals that we've developed with our staff's input on how to better ask questions, and for kids to ask questions, having discussions, how to increase like higher-level thinking, and also on summarizing. Those have high-yield results, the research shows. And then she has been working on Acadians. It's a program that we use, kind of like the iReady, to help gather information on discrete skills, so that we can offer very targeted intervention on where students might be lacking in reading, so that we can make sure that we're closing gaps and bringing everybody up to grade level. She's actually running a session for us in the morning on Friday during our early, well, our entire professional development day. That's the AM session, is how to use that data to make better instructional decisions in the classroom. And so this is our first year of using it with reading and math, and so we're starting to have some trendline data, because we progress monitor quite frequently to see where kids are showing up in that. And also, that information is used to help with the report cards, so that there's more data points to pull from, so that there's accurate reporting in those areas. And then we also have been working with our DIJ. We had some choice sessions in December. Our sessions that we offered at Main Street School and the EDP were on othering and belonging. We had a session on Dreseran that was on classism. We talked about inclusive classroom libraries, and then holidays and celebrations, and our staff signed up and then attended various sessions. In our leadership team, they have representatives from each kind of stakeholder at school. We've been reading this book, which is called Visible Learning, and it also has to do with John Hattie's research. If you know his research, he does these meta-analyses, and I'm not, I don't know, statistics is, I understand what he's saying, but I'm glad I'm not able to break this all down, but it basically is research that's been done over the last 30 or 40 years, that is all grade levels, from preschool through college level, on just how the human brain learns and what some of the best instructional practices are, so that we're not just saying like, oh, I feel like this is a good strategy, or kids really like this, but it is across the world, there's case studies from all different countries and all different age ranges on what yields high results. And so we've been reading this, this one is just on early childhood, so it's, it's really focused on kids through the age of six, but also includes kids through the age of eight. And so we've been reading it as a team to talk about what practices work with the best type of learning. So if you are at a very elementary level of learning, it's a first exposure, these are high-yielding instructional strategies. As you move into like a deeper level of learning, these are some high instructional strategies, and then there's kind of like little vignettes and stories on what that could look like in a classroom and some videos. So we just had our first meeting on it today. We read the intro in chapter one, and it's been really exciting, the teachers are excited about it, and so it feels good to have something concrete to lend yourself to that has good research and data associated with it. So we're doing that. And then Friday afternoon is left for some more professional learning community time, and for our special education teachers to do their progress notes, and for our teachers to work on report cards. So that's what's been going on with our staff. Questions on any of that?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Lincoln Street Principal, Ryan McCloskey.
Thank you very much. I'll start off with just a couple of professional development pieces. Coming up on our January 23rd, our newly revised calendar, but January 23rd, when we have our in-service day, I believe it's Main Street and Lincoln Street. We'll have an executive functioning training that will provide a learn-ittoday, use-it-tomorrow set of strategies to assist teachers with helping students become independent in executive functioning. The trainer will present the conditions that must exist to make students aware of the passing, of the passing of work time, and the visuals that assist students with getting academic assignments done. That will be for certified staff as well as support staff, so as a K5 or pre-K5 system, we'll be experiencing that training together. We are just a little bit behind Main Street, but we will have our training on this Friday for differencing and othering. So specifically, what we're hoping to do is to have staff discuss scenarios where a student may feel othered or different, and want or need some support from staff to experience belonging. Staff will broaden their understanding of how to address differences when they come up in the school setting. Right now, we're just trying to build capacity with the staff, and also comfortability with the topic, with the intention of really trying to make this happen more at the student level next year. So we have a series of dates between now and the end of the school year to have some of these conversations with staff, and then talk about how to then transfer that and bring this topic up at the student level, which we think is going to really happen around like the word belonging, in that sense of community. Excuse me. We are going to be having our Alma progress reports sent home on January 26th, shortly after the end of Semester One. During the week of January 22nd, that week that the progress reports will be sent out, we're asking our teachers to conference with all students to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the areas that they're proud of, talk a little bit about goal-setting, talk about some areas of growth as well as goal-setting, talk a little bit about our CARES acronym or our work-study practices. So try to have some of those talking points a little bit more comfortable for students so that we can increase that engagement and that conversation between school and home, and student and parent or caregiver. And I'll be sending home a family announcement the day before we send the progress reports home, letting parents know, or in caregivers know, that we've had these conferences, and to give them some prompts to try to encourage or increase that engagement. So, that's something that, based on feedback that we've gotten, is we just want to heighten that engagement. We have a couple of music updates. We had our fifth-grade band and chorus concert in mid-December. Fourth-grade students participating in beginning band will begin rehearsals next week. They'll have their first concert in May. Our Lincoln Street School chorus is part of a PTO fundraiser. We'll sing the National Anthem later this month at the UNH hockey game. Pretty excited about that. They also get to be in a high-five line with the players, so we're looking forward to that. They needed to reach a certain ticket sale to be able to do this, and we've comfortably exceeded that, so students, it's a nice benefit to the sacrifice of giving up that recessed time to be part of chorus and be able to go out onto the rink at UNH. Actually, I'll just skip to the last music update. Ms. Levergood was hoping to be here tonight, but she was not able to, but we are going to have a pretty significant change in our band program. The music department would like to encourage the, encourage enrollment into the orchestra program at CMS and EHS. Violin is an instrument that requires a great deal of practice, and starting that practice earlier will have a positive effect on the middle and high school orchestra programs. So we are hoping to offer fifth graders at Lincoln Street School the opportunity to play violin, starting this coming fall. They would receive once-a-week lessons, similar to our existing band program. The lessons would be taught by Ms. Levergood, and by offering Lincoln Street School students a year of violin, they would have the opportunity to be leaders in the orchestra program at CMS. When they get to CMS, they would also have the opportunity to switch to either the viola, the cello, or the double bass. The skills on violin translate to the other string instruments. In order to allow Ms. Levergood the time to teach these lessons, we will phase out the percussion lessons at LSS. In speaking with the music, or music director at CMS, there is no problem in recruiting percussion students, and it's a quicker skill set to learn than the string programs. That is one piece that, that changes. As far as whether or not we'll be able to offer the strings program at the fourth-grade level, it's going to depend on student interest and just kind of what time, type of time commitment that's going to take at the fifth-grade level, but the hope is to be able to eventually offer it fourth and fifth, but it will start with fifth next year. And the last update that I have is our literacy committee for Main Street and Lincoln Street has heard presentations from five different programs. Last week, teachers who agreed to to pilot the final programs under consideration were given time to review all programs that were presented, take deeper dive into the resources, usability, assess how well the program would meet our needs. There was a K2 group that did this. There was a 3.5 group that did this as well. Tomorrow afternoon, we come together, and we're gonna go through, we're gonna facilitate a process where we ideally are down to two programs by the end of the day tomorrow, which will be the programs that we then work for with the pilots, and eventually, again, schedule that May 24th date, which all the programs have said that they would be able to support. So thank you for that again.
Thank you. Okay, on to the committee reports. Do we have an update for DEIJ? Beth?
That committee actually did not meet. There were multiple illnesses that week. So Abby rescheduled. I don't know when she, did she find a date? I'm trying to look through my emails, but it was gonna be rescheduled in January. Yeah, she just said January, so we're yeah. Yep. Now I see it. We all had COVID in my house.
Okay. So the rescheduled date is what?
1/24.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to policy. Is there an update, Patrick?
Well, the update is that, first of all, we spent most of the time at the last policy committee meeting, looking again at an initial proposal for joint board policy handbook, and that is going to be sent out to all board members, probably by the end of the week, I think is the plan, and discussed at the joint board meeting, which I think is January 22nd. Is that right? Yeah, January 22nd. So that's what most of the focus was on, and then there's a few policies that we can cover in the new business. It was a much lighter load in terms of new policy.
Okay, perfect. The superintendent evaluation committee met with Superintendent Asbell and Heather and HR. We reviewed what we thought was a good 360 that would go out to all the administrators, staff, people representing the staff, the...
Union leadership.
The union leadership. And I've, I've distributed this to the board for your feedback. We don't have to get into a big discussion with it. Just provide your feedback to me, no later than the end of the month, so that I can go back to the committee at the beginning of February, and we can consolidate the feedback and make any changes that we see fit. But that's just where things are with that committee, and we're moving right along. And I think the superintendent's meeting her goals that she set up for herself, and she's tracking very well. The wellness committee is meeting on the 11th, and this is the first time in a long time that we're meeting, and I think the focus is going to be a policy, which will be new for me, but we'll be doing that. The School Safety and Security Task Force, we are meeting again in February on the 22nd, 9:00 AM at Exeter High School. The Communications and Community Engagement Committee, Heather sent me an update via text that I will read. The update is that our SAU 16 communications survey is now live, as Superintendent Aswell stated earlier. All residents of the SAU are encouraged to complete it. You do not have to have students enrolled, open to the community and to students, and it's only five minutes to complete. So we do encourage all people to participate. This was a big takeaway from the past several years, and it's finally coming to fruition, and it will only be the best that it can be if people participate, and, and we'll get the best result. And I think that wraps up our committee reports. Under new business, we have a policy review, and Patrick, you can take this over.
Okay. So it's very exciting, first of all, the first change, because we have a change to a policy that has not been changed since 1986.
Oh, that was still in high school.
I'm not even sure if there's an SAU. I think there's an SAU right now. But it's, it has not been changed in a long time. So, and it's a very short policy. It's just a policy about approval of handbooks, and just really, just updates some of the language to make it a little bit more clear about the process, and that they're not district-wide policies, but they're board policies, because there could be some variance, although we try not to have variance. There could, each board is an individual entity, so there could be some variance among boards. So just a few little changes there. It's, it's a two-line policy, and there's a couple of wording changes. So, there you go. And then the other policies, so that's just, that's just revision. The other ones are revision as well, but it's a more substantial revision, and that's looking at attendance and truancy of our policy. So this has some incorporation of updated rules regarding attendance and truancy, but really just, you can see, it's, it's written differently, and really the focus is on trying to provide support and to be able to reach out to those folks that have chronic truancy, to really understand what's going on there better, and to better track what's happening. So this policy is more in line with that than the prior policy. So the, the recommendation is to adopt this policy, but then also to withdraw a policy that was related to rules, that we don't need a separate policy related to, is that, do I have that right?
Yes, student absences and excuses rules, which is now incorporated in the policy.
Right. It's incorporated into it. That's right. Yep.
So instead, we need to withdraw J-H dash R, because the rules are now in J-H.
That's right. Yep. So, yeah, so that's it. It's two policies.
And one removal.
And one removal. Why don't we start with the one that's hopefully pretty simple, which is the short policy on approval of handbooks? Just that it's a revision, as C-H-C-A approval of handbooks. I'd make a motion to approve the revision for that one.
I'll second. No, I, I support the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And so the other one is this attendance and truancy policy, J-H, to approve that and to withdraw J-H-R, which is student absences and excuses. I'd, I'd move that we do both of those then.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Okay. Did we do? Okay, that's true. Okay, and then under old business, Esther?
We did get a request for a sabbatical, and I just can't remember who's on the sabbatical committee, because the processes that we've met, reviewed that, and then made a decision and brought it to the board. But I think, Patrick, you've been a longstanding member of that. I'm not sure if you still are.
I have been on it, at least, yeah.
I feel like I might be.
Sure.
But I'd have to look it up in the notes. I don't have it in front of me.
So if, if board, if you could let me know, Patty, who is on it, then I will have Sharon set up a review meeting. We don't have, we don't normally do it at a board meeting. We usually do it, because it's not a quorum. There's usually two people. Then we have a, I think it's a teacher rep. I'll look it up, so I can call all those people together to review. It's one proposal.
Okay. All right, great.
If you need someone to join in, happy to help. But if you already have someone appointed, that's fine.
I don't really know. I'll have to look. Okay, wasn't there something else Molly needed us to do?
So now, we just need to look at the budget, the proposed budget, and the board would need to make a motion to approve this budget, to move forward to as-is, or to make an amendment based on public input for the deliberative session. So I guess the first question is, does the board want to discuss making any changes to the budget that's currently proposed?
I think, as I stated earlier, we have spent a good amount of time reviewing this and working with the administrators in our district. Keeping in mind that, you know, sensitivity around increase in taxes and the impact it has to our community, I feel as though our budget is in a good place, and the increase is actually lower than we had actually initially hoped. So...
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I feel like we made, we made changes before now, and given that there wasn't any additional public input, and I'm not, there's nothing that's, that's I've been made aware of in, you know, the past month, that would make, you know, make me think that we need to change the budget. I was really happy that folks went back and looked at it, took a hard look, and it's hard to figure out sometimes, and how you can look for some additional savings, but they found ways to do that that made sense. So, $10 as well.
So we would look for a motion to approve that proposed budget as presented for a deliberative session, so we can...
I will make a motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025 as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh geez, that outlasted our meeting.
You can't adjourn that for 16 more seconds.
Okay, snack time.
As I, I don't have anything for now.
So there is many items to require signatures.
I'd like, should I adjourn?
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 6:45 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.